I'll order the eight hundred and ninetieth meeting of the Board of Representatives. What will call?
Keith Jandro.
Here.
Isabel Lozier.
Here.
Jacob Harrio.
Here.
Toby Jandro.
Here.
Mary Oleth.
Present.
All right. Gary Sidley.
Present.
Sarah Ashburn.
Here.
And our student reps are not.
Any adjustments to the agenda?
I do have two adjustments, but before I do, I just want to welcome Isabel to the, uh, to the group. Isabel is the Wallisgrass appointee, and she'll be with us at least until the elections in Wallisgrass, which are slated for, um, March. So, welcome Isabel, and, uh, enjoy. Uh, for adjustments, I have, uh, there's a little slip of paper right there in front of you that has one of them, but I have a second one. So, the first one, under Items of Business, New Business, add Item B. It's a vote to authorize the school revolving renovation fund financing. Uh, Lucy sent an email out earlier today. We just got the paperwork for that, and it's, uh, to just sign off on that. And, um, after speaking with the chairman and with, uh, with Jake here, uh, we're gonna put in Item F under New Business, and it's to appoint a new member to Valley Unified, since this will be Jake's last.
Period public participation. Kevin, anyone else wanna sign off for that?
I think because Kevin is not a resident, you would have to approve him to speak.
You want to make a motion to allow Kevin to speak?
Certainly.
Second, any discussion? All those in favor? Kevin?
Thank you very much for allowing me the opportunity to speak to you this evening. Um, in regards to the upcoming, uh, mediation that you will take, that will take place within the districts, so that way we can determine if we do have a regionalization approved. I being the chair, uh, the director at St. John Valley Tech, um, of course, I have, uh, the vested interest in having a regionalization, and I'd like to explain to you how regionalizing our school system would benefit the children of our districts. And I know that you've gone through this in many different facets, but please indulge me for the few minutes that I had for you, okay? Um, over the years, the tech center has been in its inception since nineteen ninety-two, been present. So, we have experienced a true regionalization within our SAUs. If you understand that we have Madawaska, we have St. Agatha, we have SAD twenty-seven represented at the tech center. They all send youth there, and they all participate in one form of education, that's CTE education. For twenty-eight years, we have been successful at educating our youth in the hard and soft trades. And if we were to poll our businesses in the area, would we be safe to say that the majority of our businesses are all in the area, a lot of hard trades? I guess we could say that, right? Okay? You have a lot of welders out there, a lot of plumbers, electricians, carpenters, et cetera, okay? We all know the, the great number of individuals within the workforce at this present time, not only Arista County, not only our valley, but the nation, that are going to be retiring out in the next few years. Okay? They're the baby boomers, okay? So, with their outward migration, leaves vast gaps, okay? Vast gaps for people to fill those slots. So, it's ve- very important that we continue educating our youth in those endeavors, okay? I have business owners knocking at my door all the time, saying, "I need your help. Please, we, our workforce is diminishing within five years by fifty percent." When I ask, "What is your workforce?", "Thirty-five people." That's a vast change in their industry. So, just to give you that brief perspective, if we were to regionalize in one building, okay? We would gain one hour of education per CTE student every day. That's a hundred seventy-six hours a year. Talk about more education, more training, more business collaboration that can take place, okay? So that way, we can put our young students in the marketplace right away and start utilizing the education that they're receiving to make a better productive workforce development. We can't ignore that backforce, okay? So, it's important that we realize the benefits of that. Uh, secondly, if we regionalize, what that would hap- what would happen is we have more people at one area. So, right now, if I was to poll many students, some say, "I don't go to CTE because I'm away from my friends," or, "Uh, I'm away from my district school," okay? Whereas, they'd be all in the same building, that takes out that excuse, if you have more populace right there that can be involved in CTE. You could have students at that point take a quarter, a semester, a year, or multiple years of CTE, growing their numbers, therefore giving greater opportunity for the workforce development in our communities to thrive. We all know we're not growing in population at present if we do nothing, right? So, we need to think outside the box and be able to say, "What can we do to help our economic development?" This is not all about education focus. It's about our economic development in the area as well, okay? We have a social responsibility as an educational body to ensure that we are an active player and making sure that happens, and we could do this in that endeavor, okay? So, I implore you to think about that as you mediate, okay? And think about not only the school SAU, but the vast area of the valley, okay? We are each other. We are academies. We are valley members. We're all one of the same. Let's support each other by making this an enriching opportunity for our youth, which is our future, okay? I want to see the valley flourish as much as anyone else, and this is an opportunity to put a piece in there to make it work better, okay? So, I think that's highly important, and again, the, just to reiterate that in closing here, the statistics show that right now, there is eight-point-three million trades, okay? Within the United States that are going to be seeking to backfill because of baby boomers getting out of the trades, okay? And this is solely looking at just the hard trade piece, not soft trade, okay? Just the hard trades, mechanical engineers, plumbers, pipe cleaners, electrical, et cetera, okay? Those are staggering numbers. What can we do to ensure that we continue that endeavor, okay? Yes, if you have a school here, a school there, a school there, tech can still continue, but if I look at the statistics from past years, from its inception, okay, to present, we have had a negative thirty-six-point-one percent change in enrollment, okay? One may say, "Oh, well, our kids of today are more techie. They don't want to go to the trades." That could be a small facet, but let's look at the nucleus of our schools. Have we all had a diminishing number of enrollment in our schools? Yes, right? So, if we populate ourselves all together in one, yes, then we're in one unit being able to at least have them, have a greater opportunity to participate, okay? As I mentioned before, those pieces. So, within the last ten years, sixteen-point-four percent change to the negative, okay? And again, that nucleus is changing all the time. But I need you to change that course of event. If we're all regionalized, we have that opportunity to build that number up, okay? So, that's why I'm here to implore to you, it's not all about education focus. Education's a big piece of it and a big component of it, but it's economic development that you will foster and put in place some guaranteed benefits for our workforce out there. 'Cause I can tell you, they are knocking at my door. I encourage any one of you to come see what we offer at the tech. Do you know the programs we offer? Good. I'm glad you say yes. But I want you to come see it for yourselves, see them in action, see them working, see the business collaborations we're doing now in the community that have a positive impact, okay? We can make that ten times bigger if we really put our efforts in regionalize. So, I thank you very much for the time that you, you provided me today to at least speak on behalf of CTE and all educators in each SAU, be it CTE or academic. We are relying on you to make a great informed decision. I know it's not easy, but please, please, think of the youth, think of the economic development. You have a means of being able to alter the course of history for the better. Don't make it something you regret. Make it something you'll be proud of, and that we've collaborated our efforts to make something good. Again, I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hi. I think everyone knows me, but, um, I'm the guidance counselor at Valley Rivers, and I've been working here for about twenty years, and I just wanted to speak a little bit because there's been a lot of talk about this, obviously, working in the schools and out in the community, and I felt like some of the stuff that I was hearing in the community and from like parents and, um, staff members as to like our board's decision already being made and that kind of a thing that I wanted to at least kinda speak up a little bit about. Like, I've worked here for so long that I feel like I've presented to the boards before. I've talked to people on this board one-on-one about problems we've had in our district, and I think that we're forward thinkers, and, you know, we have spent a lot of money educating our students on being, you know, um, being open-minded and, you know, being growth, having a growth mindset. And I'm hoping that when you guys go to mediation next Monday, that you are being forward thinkers and that you are using that open mindset that we're speaking to our students about, because I've always been really proud to work in this district, and I understand your concerns. I, I sold real estate for many, many years, and I know that a lot of people think that if their, uh, schools close, that the value of their homes will go down, that, um, their taxes will go up. And I really believe that if we were competing with another town that was getting this school, that, that may be something that we should be concerned about here in Fort Kent. I really do. But the fact that all of our districts would be coming together and that regardless of whether you live in Fort Kent, Wallisgrass, Madawaska, Frenchville, your kids would get to go to this school, I really don't think that it's going to change people's opinion about where they would want to buy real estate. So, if that's what people who have come to you and talked to you and said, "We have to have it in our town", I think that that's something that, um, we need to be able to speak further about because I, I've sold many houses to many people from outside that have come to our community, and they do look at the schools, but we are gonna have an elementary school, and traveling fifteen minutes to have a state-of-the-art school, most people, I think, are gonna be okay with that. Lots of people that I've talked to have said that they would be totally fine with that, to be able to provide their child with that opportunity. And I also know that there has been a lot of concern about the way that the pla- you know, that the spot was chosen, and I'm hoping that you guys can discuss that at mediation and be able to figure out some of those concerns, um, in terms of like, you know, taxes going up. Uh, I do believe that if we can provide this opportunity to our students, um, and we get to that stage, like, right now, I feel like we don't even know that. We haven't gotten to the stage where we've been able to look at, "What's this gonna cost us?", and, you know, "How is the money that we're getting going to be able to be used in relation to how much we have to put in?" And I know there's concern about the voting, and all of those things, I think, can be discussed by people who have that open mind and that growth mindset and figure that out. And that's what I'm hoping for happens on Monday. But when I hear people say their minds are already made up, or, you know, "Oh, you know, I've tried and been shot down", or, you know, that really disappoints me because you guys are representing us. And to be perfectly honest with you, um, you know, I was nervous about coming because you're my boss's boss, you know? And, um, lots of people have talked about that too, and I know you've heard from the PTO, and I know you've heard from some of the teachers' associations, and yet, I keep hearing people say that they don't feel like that fifty percent's voice is being heard. And I'm hoping that you are able to prove that wrong and to say that, you know, you are hearing these people as well, and that you do understand that many of us as educators, we've seen this from its inception. We've looked at it. We've visited schools. We've talked to kids. And honestly, we believe that this is, and I, and I speak for, you know, many people, but I'm not saying I speak for everyone, but we believe that this is what's best for our kids, and we want you as our board who represents us and as our community to take that into consideration when you guys go on Monday and look at a way to be able to save this school, because I think that if we give this money up and don't provide this opportunity to our students, that we're really, really gonna regret it, because this is an amazing opportunity for us, and I just hope that you consider that on Monday, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on, approval of minutes for the eight-hundred-and-ninety-eighth meeting? Come on.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? And, uh, approval of financial statements for October and November?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Announce. Superintendent?
I just wanted to provide you with a couple of updates from the Department of Education. Uh, before I do that, I just wanted to put a plug here. Melanie Legasi, the Valley Unified Food Service Director, wanted you all to know that last week, we served six-thousand-one-hundred-and-ninety-one meals, uh, to, um, remote learners and/or, uh, children under the age of eighteen that requested a meal, so that's a lot of meals. Um, that's, um, five-hundred-and-sixteen lunches and five-hundred-and-sixteen breakfasts per day that we were serving, uh, on those days that we served, so, pretty amazing. Um, now getting to the DOE updates. Um, there was a face mask guidance update last week, and then again, um, uh, there was a more strict one, uh, passed through the governor's executive order. Basically, when you are entering a building anywhere in Maine now, you, you are face, uh, wearing face masks. But specific to schools, uh, there was talk about, um, mask breaking and making sure that students are stationary when they're mask breaking. Um, and with regards to taking the mask off for eating, really making sure that those six-foot distances are upheld, and students should be facing in, in a similar direction, not across from each other. Uh, just some, some guidance on that. CDC changed their requirement for, uh, for quarantine, required quarantine from fourteen days down to ten. Uh, there was a meeting with Dr. Roberts and the health advisory team, and our school nurses opted to stay with the fourteen-day requirement for the time being, just out of an abundance of caution. Uh, they, they really felt that, um, that the, the ten-day guidance, um, is specific to urban areas that are in a short, uh, shortfall of, of help, and, and they're trying to get a quicker turnaround of people to recover and get back to work, whereas, um, we don't, we don't necessarily have that problem here. So, the nurses really felt comfortable, uh, sticking with the fourteen-day guidance, uh, especially given that, you know, there are some active cases in the area. So, we'll revisit, I think, Peter, we said we'd revisit, uh, if, if, in, after, yeah, after, at the end of the first semester, and then make a decision to go to the ten-day after that. Um, I attended the Regional Superintendent's meeting every Thursday. I meet with the other presidents of the, um, of their associations for the, the county. Uh, I represent Arista County, and, um, they wanted to give us, uh, a couple of, of insight on some changes about to happen. Uh, the DOE will be pushing out some new guidance regarding ventilation, uh, for the months, for the winter months. Uh, right now, the current guidance still says that your bus should have an open window in the front and the back. Um, it's very cold out, and even though it's, you know, milder today, uh, we're gonna need some, some updated guidance on that. Um, they're going to push out some more face covering, uh, updates based on the governor's, um, new executive order, and they're also going to be pushing out some, um, some elective and voluntary, um, extracurricular band guidance. Right now, because band essentially can't happen within the framework of the, of the return-to-school guidance, um, they're going to model a little more what is happening on the, uh, the athletic side and allow for some extracurricular band, um, things to happen, so there's going to be something on that as well. Um, the DOE wants to remind us to take care of our school community members, so they pushed out a priority notice, uh, last Friday on some, uh, resources that staff could have specific to, uh, staff and students, excuse me, specific to, uh, school-based mental health support, social, emotional learning, uh, training and resources, and, uh, a new social-emotional learning curriculum for, uh, schools that want them. We'll be pushing this information out to our staff so that they can, um, again, um, push that out to the, to the students and staff who need it. And then the final update I have, um, is a joint statement on a commitment and support for diversity and equity and inclusion in main schools. Uh, this was pushed out also last Friday, urging schools to work with their school boards on a commitment to support diversity and equity, and, um, I, I have, uh, a plan that I've, um, gone through with my administrative team. Developing an equity task force, uh, and it's something that I, I think, you know, we're not gonna roll out right now because of all the things that are going on, but, uh, definitely planning forward. Uh, we're gonna form that task force to essentially look at, uh, how we're doing in regards to, um, an equity balance in our district. So, it's just information for you, um, at this time. Any questions on that? Uh, I do have my administrators here, um, and I'd like them, if they don't mind, putting them on the spot to just give a, a real brief update on remote learning, uh, on remote learning, how it's going, the feedback you're hearing from your teachers, students, if you've heard from them, and I'm sure the board would appreciate, so I'll start with, um, Mr. Neto, you want one?
Yeah, uh, very, very different picture right now compared to what we had in the spring. In the spring, it was a big rush to learn all, learn Zoom, learn Google, learn all of these different things. Uh, I was talking earlier with Jake, just very different atmosphere. I wouldn't say people are not stressed out. Uh, there's still a stress there, but it's a different type of stress. So, we had, you know, just today, we had teachers coming in, asking questions about how either editing their videos, whereas in, in the spring, it was more about, "How do we record a video? How do we make a video?" Uh, so I'd say, uh, much more successful this time around. Still some adjustments to be made. Um, the, the plan seems to be going well in terms of what the expectations are, but there's still gonna be some fine tuning there with, within each of the individual classrooms. We were able to get, uh, packets of papers, seminal for the students that are gonna need that, particularly with the flyboard skills and worksheets, those types of things. But all in all, I'd say very, very successful. In terms of the office, you know, sometimes you can gauge in terms of how many people are coming into the office, how many phone calls you're getting, um, so that's, I would say, it's been quiet, but I would say it's a very, very different picture than what we had in the spring. So, I'm really proud of the staff in terms of what they did, not just through the spring in terms of learning, but that extra they put in since then to be ready for now, so, really, really great job, I think, by all the staff and all the teachers and all the execs in terms of what they've done throughout. Really professional, great work by everybody.
And just unsolicited, when I came into the meeting, Chad walked in to set up and he shared from a, from a parent's perspective that it's very different, uh, from a parent's perspective as well on the other side, I think, is what you meant, Chad. He's nodding, so that's, that's great. Um, Mr. Coletta, you wanna give us some information?
We had, uh, much like Mr. Neto, a little positive, um, week, uh, first week. Most of our, you know, kids that I've seen at, at the store, been talking to them, they are, uh, pleasantly surprised at how well it's going. Teachers are very, you know, upbeat about overall, how come that is going, the attendance and things. Uh, so much better compared to last year. It's just night and day, but, you know, but Mr. Neto said, and a lot of this has to do with, you know, teachers are, are more comfortable, uh, students are more comfortable with the format, you know. And also, our schedule, we've set up so that we have half the amount of classes each day, so it's definitely more doable for the kids. It's not as overwhelming, um, unless we had six periods a day. This year, we've got, you know, created kind of three and a half, you know, wingtime, uh, where, you know, students can catch up on it, work and mediate as well. So, they're, uh, you know, doing well. Mr. Dorman, uh, I talked to him today. He said he had a hundred percent, uh, for all of his classes, a hundred percent attendance, so, um, I mean, that's really good. He gives a two percent senior, so, very happy to hear that, and, uh, you know, there's definitely- And, you know, there's definitely less kids, we call it going dark, where they don't show up to class. We had a first list, you know, there's probably, you know, three or four kids per grade level in that, but then, you know, we're able to get on those kids a lot easier compared to last year when we had, you know, we had a list of a lot of younger when we had, you know, find those kids and get them. So, we're very happy. Our teachers are working wicked hard. They've done what they've, they've taken the bull by the horns. Last year, the late days, the days that lead into the year, really, you know, like the rave use. And then what we've got, the technology with some of the COVID funds has really helped out a lot. And everybody's more comfortable, working hard, but they're, I think, the quality of the education is there, and some of the events are very happy with that. Part of it, when I got back from today, it seemed like the second week, so just a lot.
Thank you. And I'm sure you got your update today. We had a second, we had a second case associated with Fort Kent Elementary School, luckily, you know, speaking with the nurse consultant at the DOE, speaking with Nurse Rebecca, who's handling these. These were cases where the student, the individual was not positive when they were last year. So, that's good. We wish them a speedy recovery, but it's just goes to learn that I think we did the right choice moving to that remote model. We hope to meet with our Northern Maine Medical Center advisors over the Christmas break. And we have a date for the 28th setup right here?
The 28th, we meet with the health advisors?
Yes, December 28th. And to reexamine what's happening after the holiday break and then make a determination. Obviously, we'd love to be back in school, and that's going to be our primary goal. And so, we'll look at what's happening in the community when we make that decision. Any questions on that?
So, will you be moving forward with saying we're going to do remote learning after the Christmas break just to be on the safe side?
I think we really, with Dr. Roberts' guidance, we really want to see what's happening in the, this spite that we have right now seems to be contained to that same incident. And we're hoping that that incident has some recoveries and that number drops lower and we feel more confident about reintegration of that. Just wanted to give you a CRF 2 update with regards to reallocation that came by surprise the day before Thanksgiving. I opened up my email with a login to the system where we file these original requests for CRF funds, and there was a new award of $295,000 for our district that we had to figure out how to spend by Tuesday the 2nd. So, Giselle, Lucy and I were very, very busy on Monday, Tuesday, coming out of Thanksgiving break and looking at how we can best put these funds to use and speaking with Anne Marie about how the MLTI system works and how, when we sign up for MLTI, the program, we fund in that program the devices for your teachers, your guidance counselors, your school nurses. So, we made a determination that since we're looking at a new MLTI contract possibly this spring, it would help us on the local budget side if we would fund new devices for our educators now and not have to put it in the local budget when we budget in the spring. So, there will be new devices for all educators in this project. We're also able to secure devices for those ed techs that had not been covered in the previous round, so we're going to have devices for them as well. We got some camera upgrades for Fort Kent Elementary School in this as well. Trying to think what else we've had in this project.
You?
Well, that wasn't the original CRF, but I'm specific. The big one was the laptops. That was the big project overall. But it was good. Oh, we did get some curriculum materials. So, we will be securing a new math curriculum at Fort Kent Elementary School. And then here at CHS VRMS, actually VRMS specific, the science curriculum was completed with all of the student materials that we needed. And then we are looking at matching the high school math curriculum with the middle school math curriculum. So, now we'll have a comprehensive 7 through 12, possibly K through 12 after Mr. Neto and his team look at the elementary program, which is, which would be amazing. Any questions on that? Did want to update you on the current CRF projects. You probably noticed that the story is going up at Fort Kent Elementary School, and that is on track to be completed by December 31st. We do have some more flexibility from the DOE if these projects run beyond December 31st. We are now allowed to have those projects that were intended to be done to carry over into January, and we are allowed to submit for invoicing with the DOE up to March 1st. So, a little more flexibility, and our contractors are breathing a sigh of relief because of that, especially Third Eye Global, who I think they have 15 projects in our school district. They've been very busy this past week updating the cameras. As you walk down the hall and look up, you'll see that there's a lot of cameras being updated as we speak. And the intercom system is also being updated in both buildings as well, so they've been very busy. We've pretty much secured all of our purchases. Lucy followed up with all the team leads last week to make sure that all of those projects were buttoned up and all of the orders had in place. So, things come in slowly, and we continue to put them to use as soon as we do. So, we seem to be right on track with our CRF, our CRF work. Do you guys only have two pages of notes playing, or do you have multiple pages?
Just two.
Just two, yeah. Our notes are, were cut short. I was noticing that I don't have the other page. Yeah, same, same one I have. Actually, I think you and I have different pages. All right. I'll get my digital copy so that I have my talking points. Maine education assessment information. I can't remember if I updated you all on this, so I thought I'd just bring it back. The state of Maine is retooling their education assessment suite. If you remember, three years ago, I think they had, or four years ago, they had moved to the Smarter Balance test. That's the spring test they give to students in grades three to eight and grade 11. Then a few years later, they dropped Smarter Balance and they picked up Cognia, which was the new Empower Me test that they did for two years. Last year was supposed to be the third year, so we were supposed to have three years of data last year by COVID hit, so they did not test in the spring. The DOE looked carefully at that contract this summer, and they decided not to renew it. So, now Cognia is gone, and the commissioner is working with the school districts right now to secure the NWEA test, which is an assessment that we were using in our schools. Many Maine schools use NWEA as a formative assessment platform, and the NWEA will become the new Maine state test, but it won't be used exactly the same way. It's going to be used more in a formative light is how the commissioner is framing it. The state will also purchase the suite for districts so that this is not going to be an added cost for us. They'll only purchase it for grades three to eight, and I think they're looking at grade 10 instead of 11. The SATs are no longer a required test from the DOE. They will be optional from now on for those students who want to take it. So, we will still offer the SAT, but it will be an optional test. So, that's the direction that the DOE is taking right now. They're supposed to put out a press release as soon as the contract is solidified with NWEA, and I'll have more information for you at that time. In your packets, you should have board report, administrator reports. I believe we have one from USET, one from Mr. Micho, and one from Stacy Seer. I don't know if you had any questions about those reports.
We don't have any questions.
Under old business, I put an item for Valley Unified mediation, just, oh, sorry. Just so that I can remind the full group that mediation has been scheduled, and I think it's confirmed. I'm not sure. Maybe Toby and Gary have more information, but I believe it's scheduled for Monday, and it will be starting at 4:00. It will be conducted via Zoom, and it will not be a public meeting, which is why you only have two board members that are representing you for that purpose. And this mediation is not a binding mediation. In other words, whatever the mediator rules on is not something that, you know, is something we have to do. But it will, I assume, be advisory at that time. That's pretty much the information I have. I don't know if you all wanted an opportunity to speak about, I'm assuming it's Gary and Toby that are representing, I think. I don't know if you wanted an opportunity to talk to your representatives about that mediation.
We're pretty good on that. We've talked many times in the past. Anyone have anything they want to add, or?
Just, I'll put a finer point. The mediator doesn't make a decision. We just, we talk. That's all it is.
Okay.
Mediator's there to kind of act as a referee. It's not, there's not like a judge. It's just, we talk. So, that's what's going to happen.
We got the new business. Under items for information, we do not have any retirements, resignations, transfers or new hires. We do have two recommendations for part-time cooks, and that was due to some part-time people that stepped down, I believe. Again, I don't have my notes. I'm going to try to find them real quick here. I believe the CHS part-time cook is Diane Weaver, and the, the Fort Kent Elementary part-time cook?
Melanie Boucher.
Melanie Boucher.
It's not her name.
I wish I had my notes.
You can have mine.
No, I'm going to get my digital ones though.
I don't think mine's complete either.
Something happened. So, that's the recommendation.
Motion to approve Melanie Boucher and Diane Weaver as part-time cook helpers at FKEA and CHS VRMS.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
We do not have any current openings right now. Next item I have is substitute teacher rate of pay, and Barry, I will display that on my screen so you can see it. On January 1st, the substitute, excuse me, the minimum wage goes up from $12 to $12.15. Right now, our current rates are at 85 is the low for a non-degree substitute, and that goes up to $100 a day for a retired teacher, a certified teacher. In order to meet the minimum wage requirement, because a substitute does work a seven-hour day, we would be just short of the requirement at 85.05. So, the suggestion is to just move up a dollar on every, on every scale item, 86, 91, 96 and 101. But also, in addition to that, we are proposing some substitute teacher incentives. It is extremely difficult right now to find substitutes, and we're just trying, I think I Googled, you know, how to attract more substitutes and incentive pay. Incentive pay was something that, you know, they suggested. So, we're proposing, number one is something we already do. If a substitute takes the subskills course, it's an online course, I think it's about a seven-hour course, and completes it with a passing grade, they present their certificate to us, we bump them up $5 on any scale. That's something we already offer. But after 40 days of service for substitute teaching, we are proposing that they would also go up another $5. And then, an additional step for longevity, if a substitute is with us for 80 days, we would bump up $10 at that time. Again, you know, trying to keep our long-term subs or subs that are going to be with us for a long haul and making sure that they appreciate them. We're even throwing in a free lunch. So, we're just trying as much, we tossed around some different ideas about gift cards and that type of thing, but I think it's a lot cleaner if we just do, you know, a salary adjustment on this proposal here. Note one says that if you are a long-term sub, so if you have a long-term placement, you're in one placement for a duration. After 10 days, you're already bumped up to the teacher, to where you would fall on the teacher scale. So, that's, that individual would not get the benefit of this because they would already be bumped up anyway. And then, it's not applicable to ed techs who are going to fill in as subs, because sometimes we do pull our ed techs in to, you know, fill in here, fill in there. But they have their own salary scale that would interrupt this. So, this is the proposal to go up a dollar and implement these incentives. We're going to suggest...
You want to make the motion?
I want the motion to approve substitute teacher pay rate increase incentive.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
The next item was an item that was, that was added as a recommended talking point, I believe, and it was specific to the technology assistance that we are providing to MSAD 33. And that technology assistance is essentially the director assistance. If you remember when we presented this last spring, we were going to attempt to have Anne Marie help out in SAD 33 while they, while we look to determine if they actually need a full-time director, a part-time director, or if we can look for this arrangement to be the future with that district. The way that this works is we've asked Anne Marie to do her regular day for 27. So, Anne Marie does her eight-hour day for 27, and any work that she is doing for 33 is to be done outside of her hours in 27. And speaking with Anne Marie, that's not always possible because sometimes you get a phone call or you get an email from somebody outside of this district. So, what we began doing is tracking when those things are happening and making sure that Anne Marie is recapturing that time for 27 so that there is no loss of time for 27. Essentially, making sure that she's, she's, she's doing what's right for 27 during that regular workday and then assisting as needed. If you pass by the parking lot here at CHS on any day of the week, you'll probably see Anne Marie's car here till five, six, sometimes seven o'clock at night, and that's because she is helping out and recapture that time, or she's assisting at that time. We check in with Anne Marie regularly as I did with her today to make sure she's not overdoing it, to make sure that she's, you know, not overworking herself, which is very difficult. But, you know, we know that there is a need, and we want to make sure that we're, we're helping provide that. I don't know if that answers your questions sufficiently. I don't know that in the future, maybe, depending how things go, if the right solution is to, is to take, you know, Anne Marie's contract and say, maybe we sell 10% of that contract to 33 or 20, or 20%, whatever it is, and make it more clear about, you know, the payment distribution of that. I say that, but it's very hard because you, right now, 27, you need a full time. You don't need 80% time. So, it would almost have to be above and beyond the regular time, which is essentially what we're doing right now. So, MSAD 33 is charged for those additional times through stipends is how they're doing it. So, there is a compensation for Anne Marie for that time that she's recapturing. So there is a compensation for Anne-Marie for that time that she's recapturing beyond her day.
The whole reason this came up, Ben, it just happened, was paying attention to what our neighbors are doing, obviously, as they are with us. And I noticed back in June, there was discussion in MSAD 33 about us sharing our technology coordinator, as is Madawaska, with MSAD 33 and I, I just, I felt like we hadn't had that discussion here yet. And I know we had discussion about potentially transitioning to a Valley Unified technology department and we weren't quite ready for that yet.
Yeah, I think when they discuss sharing, you're not sharing during the regular day.
Well, what was really concerning is it sounds like MSAD 33 was really in severe need of updating their infrastructure. Their technology infrastructure sounds like it was quite dated and quite lacking in comparison to ours. So that, that kind of raised a red flag in my mind, thinking, wow, Anne-Marie's really gonna be tied up with this project, you know, what's left for SAD 27 if?
33 has actually contracted, was in technology, to do the breadth of that work, all updates and that type of thing on the network side. So Zach has been contracting with them for all that work. The stuff that Anne-Marie's mostly doing is the DOE reporting stuff that needs to be done. She helps with that. She, she makes recommendations for what they need for technology and that type of thing, but not, you know, she's not functioning as a technologist. They have their own who was in technology who's doing all that work for them so that we're not providing that.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
Another item, and I'm assuming Mr. Willelt can hear me, Barry did ask for, through the chairman, for a, an item on the district's plan for the future and I think that was more just of an open discussion type thing. I'm very open to providing you my thoughts, but I think maybe that's more of a board discussion than a superintendent, unless you want it to be a superintendent discussion. I think we just need to have conversations about what happens after Monday's mediation and where do we move forward. In whatever happens, I think appropriate planning has to be part of the solution and getting ourselves to, to make a plan of action of where we go from here into the next five years at least. So I'll just open the floor for whatever your thoughts are. Barry's still there. You have to unmute yourself, Barry. You have to unmute yourself.
Where is Barry?
He's off.
He's been downstate and didn't want to come.
Click, click unmute, Barry, click unmute. Barry, I see you talking, but you have to click the mute button.
I'll, I'll sorry, I think we need to access the rural U at Ulkay more.
I'm, I'm doing now.
Yeah, we can hear you.
Go ahead, Barry. There's delay here, no what?
Hey, we can hear you, Barry.
Should we open the window?
Okay, we, we can hear you.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
There's delay here, I hear you loud and clear and you're a lot bigger than...
I know.
Yep, we hear you.
That camera, that camera died.
Okay, you can hear me on point, but it's...
Go ahead.
Look big, Ben. Am I muted or not muted?
We can hear you, Barry. Okay, we have it, we can hear you.
Can you hear me? Loud and clear and you're a lot bigger. Delay here?
Yep, we hear you.
Okay, try, try, try one more time. Go ahead.
Hello.
Hello. Yep, you're good now. You're good, Barry. Yep, you're good.
Okay. My question was, that we had, as a board, voted that we were, we were not going to follow through with the site selection. And all I wanted to know was what is planned if we do not go through with the site selection? As a board, board voted on this two or three times and every time we voted on it, we voted we are not going with the site selection. We're going, we just want out. So I guess that's my question, is what is the plan for SAD 27 if we do not participate with the site and branch home?
We, we heard that, Barry.
Okay.
Everyone's thinking about it.
Making sure you're done, that's all.
Our relationship...
My concern is that we don't have a plan now.
Well, our relationship with Valley Unified is going to continue. I mean, we have a contractual obligation, right, for another 20-some years. So I think we'll have no choice but to even explore that maybe even further. I think I mentioned earlier about the technology department, that might be something to look at down the road. Say we're gonna go back to pre-Valley Unified, I don't know if that's feasible from an economic standpoint. I don't know how else all of you feel about that.
Can you rephrase that, Keith? Our relationship with Valley Unified?
Expanding it? Well, expanding it to whatever degree best serves our school district. We're still gonna share tech centers, we're still gonna share superintendent services. I would assume at some point, central office either is gonna stay the same or morph into one. Continuing education, that already has. So where do we go from here?
I think if the project, if the project fails, I think we need to really look at what we have for resources within our community and build those up. I think, I think we have a lot of resources in our community that we take for granted. I'm talking as a, as a person who lives in a community, not necessarily as a school board member. I mean, I think that's the first thing we would need to do, is take a step back and see what we have here. I mean, we have a lot here. We got a university right across the parking lot. Jake kind of touched on it, I think we could better use that resource. I think just an assessment of where we want to go. I think in the wake of this, we need to sit down and assess what's important to us and what's not important to us. And maybe take a new, a new approach right from the, right from the start. I feel like we've always just kind of patched together what we already did. Maybe it's time to take a step back and look, take a bigger, broader picture, broader view of what we can do in our community.
We have that, what was it, that we kept talking about having all spring?
Retreat.
Board retreat. It's gonna be so awesome. Can't wait for you guys. I definitely think that you're right there, we definitely need a workshop where we can just sit down and, you know, identify the things that are important to you all and then trickle that down into, you know, we have, we have a master plan for Valley Unified, but I think we need a plan for SAD 27 and including, you know, facilities updates, including, you know, our recruitment process, including, I mentioned it a while ago, our equity passports. I think we need to do a lot of that, like, specific to you. But I, but I hope that what Keith said rings true as well. I hope that there's a future for Valley Unified just from a collaborative, we're gonna need one another for years to come and I think that we've built something really nice and you all know my position on a regional school, but if that doesn't happen, that doesn't mean that, you know, we have to stop working together to try to improve. I think we can still do that, which is my two cents.
I agree, I think there's services that...
I guess I have a question.
Go ahead, Barry.
Sarah?
I was just saying, I think there are services that we can share and things, there's things that can be streamlined there and I think that there's probably gonna need to be some repair of that relationship resource. You know, if we're gonna share services, make sure that whatever happens next Monday doesn't... Change that too far. All, all we can control on Monday is what we can control and then, all we can control, that is what we can control, I mean, again. We don't have to do what we do. And I think a workshop, retreat to define what we see as problems and then central solutions is, I believe that's course of action.
Isabel, you're new, but a recent graduate, do you have any thoughts or feelings?
I mean, personally, from my experience in high school and everything, utilizing Flory was a major help for my college, just because it saved me a lot of time and money. But also, I think, kind of like what he said, utilizing our shared, like, stuff would be also be great, kind of like you added too. So I think basically like a combination of what he's saying and what they're saying, just combining those together can probably be... I mean, obviously, I don't know a lot about it, but personally, that's how I feel. It would probably be better off to try and combine.
Thank you. Anyone else have any thoughts, Barry's?
Oh, you, Gary. Do you have the chair, doesn't mean you don't have anything.
Oh, I think like we've said, that, you know, we obviously need to sit down and brainstorm, have this retreat that we've talked about for months, year, whatever. But we do have a lot of resources available to us in the community. Sarah, I know her response to Doug, had some excellent ideas on different ways to integrate kids into the community through work standpoint, more of a hands-on learning type thing that benefit businesses and kids around. There's a lot of things we can do. I guess we just need to wait, see what the tone is gonna be Monday and how that's gonna work out.
I have, and I, and I think, I think there's a, there's a future for, for us to continue to collaborate. I really do think that, that we owe it to our communities to, this is what I highlighted a while ago, you know, we have some regional problems that we're gonna need to address. Some are very specific to this community as well and so I think we owe it to at least give that a shot. And I think proper planning is the good first step.
Anyone have anything further? As we move on to the vote authorized a school revolving renovation.
So Lucy has a prepared motion in front of you and you only, whoever makes the motion will only need to read the yellow highlighted part. Mr. Remind you, this is for the renovating loan that we applied for and received for upgrades at Fort Kennebly Elementary School for a safety vest of you and some ADA compliance and from the front entrance. Sure.
I move that the vote entitled "Vote Authorize $112,200 School Revolving Renovation Fund Financing." Be approved in the form presented to this meeting and that the secretary file a contested copy of the said vote with the minutes of this meeting.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
And the final adjustment was specific to Valley Unified representation. Jake will not be on the board much longer after he makes his move out of Canada. Therefore, this board will need a third representative to join Toby and Gary on that.
When's the next Valley Unified move?
I believe it's January 4th.
4?
January 4th, let me double check. That's an alleged workshop number one. Yeah.
Everybody jump up once, I'm already on it, I can't do it again.
Isabel, Keith, since you're from the outlying communities, do either of you have any interest?
Well, I was thinking maybe our vice chair would be interested, but I think she...
I was avoiding eye contact really hard. I, I agree, I think an outlying community would probably be a good idea.
Well, we have somebody else coming in, do we want to make, we have the capacity to make a temporary appointment until we have whoever comes in from New Canada?
Let's see if they want...
I mean, we don't get, we got, he's leaving, somebody's coming in.
Right. When you appoint, is it for a year to, or is it...
I don't, do we have a policy on that or he's making it up?
No, it's in the, it's in the interloper agreement, I think it's a three-year appointment for the interloper.
Are you talking about the DU appointment or the appointment for the board until there's a new?
It'll be a...
I'll step down.
I'm gonna keep.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Thanks, Keith.
Yes, thank you, Keith.
Isabel, I had shared with you a list of...
The standing committees?
Standing committees that Kerr was on. You don't, you don't need to decide today if you want all of those, but there is one, I'll ask if you don't mind serving for the time being and it's an appointment, it's somebody to represent on the St. John Valley Tech Board. We need one board member to serve on that and I think you bring a good, different perspective since, you know, you recently graduated, so if you don't mind accepting that one, that would be great and I'll let you know when, that you could even fill in the meeting so it's not sort of typical, Ked is waiting and you can make sure that I've got someone. And I think when we do have a new, New Canada, maybe we, maybe we can go through the list of those standing committees and reassess that. Maybe we can go through the list of those standing committees and reassess at that time.
Motion to enter into executive session for the annual evaluation of the superintendent.
I think we had table class first.
Do you want to adjourn?
All those in favor?
No, I said, okay, I'll second. Okay. I don't have to be first.
All those in favor? Do you want to adjourn?